Ladies and gentlemen, the place of allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I suppose I should have proceeded that with like college meeting door. They were a little bit back. Excited to just got today. Just had fair witness. Okay, we're now down to proving the minutes of the July 16th, 2019 record meeting. Have a motion please.
Certainly.
Mr. Wilkinson?
Sure.
Second by Mr. Curry. Is that a long yes vote?
Yes.
Long yes, okay. Public comments. Mr. Ellis, will anybody sign in and speak to the board this evening?
Yes, sir.
Okay, everybody just want to speak to the board. So let's move to presentations and reports. The first presentation we have this afternoon is Jan Hamlin. Jan's with Mountain State ESC. She's the executive director of the Mountain State ESC. And Jan, I'll let you have the floor. If you'd like to introduce anyone in the alley.
Absolutely.
Feel free to. Your floor is yours.
Good afternoon. I am Jan Hamlin from Mountain State Educational Services Cooperative. It's certainly a pleasure to be here with you this afternoon. I'd like to thank Superintendent Muthkiff and the board members for allowing me to be here to give you sort of an update on our progress in our first year of business. I have with me Tammy Stowers. She's like my right-hand person. And Tammy's been off since about the first of April with some medical issues. Her heart stopped functioning, so I'm extremely thankful and grateful to have her over here with us. She makes us better, so we're glad that Tammy's back. On July the 2nd, we opened Mountain State Educational Service Agency in Canal County in Dunbar, West Virginia. And our members include, as you know, Lincoln, Logan, Mason, Ningo, and Wayne counties. On June the 30th of 2018, we closed RISA II. And you can remember that RISA II was made up of six counties. We closed RISA II with less than a dozen employees on June 30th of last year. And as of today, Mountain State Educational Services Cooperative has over 100 full-time employees and numerous upwards to maybe 300 part-time employees. And it's due to you, as a member of our county, for, you know, letting people have those jobs. And we're certainly grateful. And if they were here, all of them would thank you immensely because through the grant process, like with the adult ed and programs like Spokes, these people didn't know where they were going to come to. And we're blessed to have them at Mountain State. During our transition year, we wanted to stay true to the intent of House Bill 2711. Today, I can honestly say that we are 100% entrepreneurial and there's no membership fee with our ESC. And I probably should have stated that there are three ESCs in the state of West Virginia. We're sort of like in the southern central part of the state. And then there's Epic, which is the Eastern Panhandle Instructional Cooperative in the Eastern Panhandle. And then there is Southern, which is near Beckley and has membership of the valid accounts. Yes.
Bill, could you help Dan and move the floor?
Oh, I can do it.
Mr. Baker, we're going to turn the phone so he can hear you better and move you closer.
Hey, Mr. Baker, can you hear me?
Hopefully you can hear it right now.
That sounds much better.
Okay, great. So there are three ESCs and we're 100% entrepreneurial and there's no membership fee to belong to Mountain State ESC. But to stay true to the intent of 2711, and we really studied that, we didn't want to be a burden on any one county. Remember as RISA II, Chapel County was our physical agent. So we wanted to pride ourselves on, you know, setting up a structure where we could do all of our own finances. Today, we are doing our own payroll for all of those people that I had mentioned and our own accounts payable. And, you know, that's a pretty big feat. That's almost like, you know, a school system or any kind of business or industry, setting up their own kind of financial structure. So we're real proud of that. We also negotiated our own optical and dental contracts. And to cut down on our overhead and our cost, we moved our building from the RISA II building, which was up by the Huntington Museum of Art, to Dunbar. We purchased that building, so now we, our council approved that, and we own our own building. And then that way, we didn't have to pay any kind of rent or anything like that. Also, as we were looking into the future, we wanted to cut down on our travel expenses too. And because we have employees all throughout the state, we thought being closer to Interstate 77, 79, 64 only made sense for us to do that. So, you know, we, when we started Mountain State ESC, we wanted to look at what our philosophy was going to be. I don't know if you all had heard of the book Lessons From The Mouse, but it's about Walt Disney and his business concepts and principles. And I don't know of anybody that can attend Disney World or Disneyland and not feel happy and come out of there with a smile on their face. So, you know, we felt at Mountain State it was important for us to provide the best customer service. You know, we really didn't know what the scope of our work was going to look like, but we knew that we wanted to provide the best service, the best products, and we wanted to do it in a way where customers would come back to us. It's like business class 101. That's exactly what we wanted to do. And then also, we knew that there could possibly be a new market. You know, we, whereas RISA II, we were involved with six counties and six counties only. But now as an ESC and as for House Bill 2711, you know, there were 55 counties. So we knew that our market might be different and then even our customer. You know, were we only going to stay with the K-12 population or were we going to do some other things as well to generate revenue? So, you know, basically, the team and I from all over the state, we sat down and basically what we did when we were devising a strategic plan was we wanted to make the quality of life better for West Virginia residents and we wanted to impact our tax base. And we did that through like our training, our educating of students and of adults as well. We knew that we wanted to apply for all the grants that we could and we were driven to do that. And we also wanted to look at what programs for us generated revenue but didn't put a burden on school systems. That's what we did want to do and we knew that we didn't want to do that for our member counties as well. And then we also knew that we were going to continue our shared services and many of you all know about AEPAs, which is our cooperative purchasing, that we were fortunate enough at RISA II to administer that contract for the whole entire state. And then finally, our last goal on our strategic plan is we wanted to develop a sound operating structure, which included our findings as well as a communication plans and some other We sort of did an annual report. This was unlike anything that we had accomplished at RISA II, but on page eight, if you look at page eight, sort of did a map there that explains the impact that we have had in the first year of Mountain State ESC. If you see the darkened red outline, those were our counties as RISA II. I think one of them's blue and the rest of them are yellow. And then the remaining three yellow counties, that was RISA III. So we've picked up in a lot of the state, all the colored areas. So we, our impact goes from Ningo County in the south to Hancock County in the northern panhandle and over to Randolph County. That's where we're doing business. And that's, that's pretty good. And then we also have one position in Martinsburg in the eastern panhandle and two in Raleigh. So we're even in, you know, the Epic and the southern areas. But if you'll take a look at the key there, we're doing anything from providing legal services, audiology support, Medicaid support, computer services. We have transition agents that have just come on board and that's to help out the opioid crisis. We're doing bus driving training, bus testing. We have the Spokes and the adult ed programs. And then we do wastewater training for the entire state. We work with local municipalities, you know, testing their water and making sure that it's safe and providing training for those wastewater employees. Also, in Randolph County, that wasn't listed on this key, we provide direction for a wood plant, a woodmaking plant. And if I ever get a chance to take you to these facilities, the wastewater treatment plant is at Cedar Lakes and the woodworking plant is in Randolph County and they do some amazing work. So it's, it's exciting to see. But that's, that's, you know, pretty significant, I think, just to start over here in six counties and then do so much work in the entire state. So we're real proud of that and I hope that the best way for you to see our expansion would be, you know, just to look at a map and to see the work that we're doing. So if you go to page one, and I'll just hit on the high points of the annual report there, in adult education, we've impacted 1,200 students in like providing their high school equivalency diplomas and over 300 Spoke students has obtained employment over our watch. So, so that's, that's significant. We also provide graduate classes. We have two cohorts that we're currently working on and have been working on, and that's in literacy and leadership. And we have about 100 students in those cohorts. We're now doing substitute teaching, not just for the six original counties as we had done in the past, but we're also doing substitute teaching in every county. You know, our program is mainly online now and we've got counties calling us from all parts of the state. I think we've trained 75 participants now. I had mentioned about the transition agents. There's all kinds of grant money out there now for, to help ease the opioid crisis that we have going on in the state of West Virginia. So basically, after last week, we're trying to support that work in two different ways. One is through the governor's initiative and the second one is a grant that we're going to be partnering with the Mid Ohio Valley Workforce Development Board to support that and, you know, get these people into recovery and hopefully, you know, to support our tax base in West Virginia. We're really proud of our first statewide conference. When Tammy and I were developing our first statewide conference, we knew that it needed to be a subject that was important to teachers and important to school systems. And if you listen to like any of the teachers testify during the legislative sessions, you know, they kept mentioning, "We need help with the mental health of students." So what we did is we came up, we had a couple of national keynote speakers, and we decided to have our first statewide conference at Stonewall Resort. Well, you know, as us being entrepreneurial, I kept telling Tammy, "We need at least 100 people to break even," you know? So much to our surprise, we sold 100 seats very fast and we sold out three times. We kept calling Stonewall, the people at Stonewall and said, "Okay, how much does all of the rooms hold?" Because that's how many educators in the state wanted to attend. So we were at capacity. Tammy and I did not have lunch because we sold our seats to somebody else and we had 280 educators attend the conference. So we felt that that was pretty successful. So successful that many of the participants requested that we do it again. So that's in the works right now. We are planning that as we speak. And then on page three there, one of the new programs that we have done for Mountain State is an apprenticeship piece. I started to attend a lot of different Chamber of Commerce meetings or municipality meetings in some of our small rural counties in West Virginia. One thing that I found out is they're really having a hard time providing EMTs, you know, to ride their ambulances and providing 911 dispatchers. So we partnered with the U.S. Department of Labor and also the Mid Ohio Valley Workforce Development Board to provide, our first service was in Rome County, where they were just really hard pressed to have somebody trained and certified on those ambulances. And then once we started that apprenticeship piece, people heard about this apprenticeship. So we have calls from, you know, mostly rural counties from all over the state and we're trying to expand those as fast as we can. One of the apprenticeships that we're doing in the fall is Little Clay County and they have an after-school program, which 95% of their students stay in, for the after-school program and they provide transportation home from the after-school program. So what we're going to do, because they also have a shortage in EMTs at 911 dispatch classes, is we are going to provide that training in that after-school program so that these students can obtain those certifications. As an EMT, you don't have to just stay in the state of West Virginia. That certification will allow you to accept a position outside of West Virginia. So those students are mobile. If we train too many for Little Clay County and they still want a career as an EMT, they can go outside of West Virginia or perhaps another neighboring county. So we're real proud of that. The apprenticeship that I'm mostly proud of happened right here in Mason County, one of our member counties. I had Pleasant Valley Hospital contact me and say, "Hey, listen, we hear what you're doing in Rome County with the EMT. I was wondering if you could come over and talk to us. We have a real shortage of CNAs." You know, the CNA turnover is pretty quick and what they, you know, usually a CNA, once they get that certification, they want to go on and obtain their LPN or even an RE. So we, Tammy and I went to Pleasant Valley Hospital. We sat down with officials, their CFO, their CEO, and their director of nursing. And we thought that this would be a good opportunity for us to provide in-house apprenticeship. We would do the class at Pleasant Valley Hospital and a nursing home that's right beside of the hospital. We had our first graduation. The CEO, CFO, and the director of nursing still wants to maintain this program because what it does through the U.S. Department of Labor is the students who qualify under WIOA get their tuition paid and also the employer, Pleasant Valley Hospital, gets reimbursed for those employee wages that they're paying the apprenticeships. And so, you know, it's basically a win-win for Pleasant Valley Hospital, but I also think it's a win-win for West Virginia because if we can increase our tax base in West Virginia, I think all of us can be, you know, will be better off for that. So we're expanding these apprenticeships left and right. I think we have 12 inquiries about people wanting us to come to their county and do an apprenticeship of some sort. We were the first in the state of West Virginia to do a healthcare apprenticeship. I think it was in the U.S. Department of Labor's newsletter or something like that. Of course, we don't think too much of those accolades. We just want to do good work for the state of West Virginia, so. So that's, that's an expansion piece that, you know, we're expanding and it's probably going to grow so fast that I'll need to hire a full-time person, you know, to oversee it because, you know, anytime that you're working with any kind of federal agency, there's a lot to maintain for that. One of the programs on page four that we're finishing up is a Bennett and Grant in which Lincoln County's part of. And that grant was for $240,000 and that was to support the simulated workplace. And, you know, Lincoln County has a superior career technical educational program and you all are doing fabulous things with that and we applaud your efforts. And I just spoke to Dr. Dantoni at the State Department last Monday, I think. We're writing, we're currently collaborating together so we can write and submit another Bennett CTE grant. And it's going to have a little different twist on it and I'll explain that in a minute. On page five, our Medicaid services at Mountain State ESC. You know, the unique thing about our Medicaid service is we provide the only Medicaid specialist that has an accounting degree. So she is able, we feel she is able to maximize your cost settlement to get the most back for your money, you know? So sometimes, I'm sure Ray knows her intimately and, you know, we're going to do the reports for you and we're going to analyze those reports and say, "Hey, you might want to go to this person or this person because I'm missing some, you know, some forms that will get you a little bit of more money back." So, you know, we're, we're very pleased with Tinesse's work with Medicaid. And then I'm going to jump to page seven and I'm going to talk about PST. I took our council not too long ago, maybe a month or so, two months ago, up to the fire center that's located in Dunbar there. And as you can see, I think we had the West Virginia Fire Commissioner. Basically, what we do is we train any first responder in the whole state of West Virginia. And if you'll remember those color areas of our map, we have trained over 20,000 since July the 2nd of last year in 2,000 classes. So that's pretty amazing to me. And then the list of classes that we provide are down at the bottom of the page. One of the new initiatives or programs that we're implementing that I said that we would come back to is we're going to do some work in entrepreneurial shifts. And I think Zack Northe, probably, I don't know if you've heard of his name or not, but anyway, he's taken some Lincoln County students to Denver, I believe it was. And, you know, they pitched their ideas, they came up with either a service or a product and they, it was sort of like Shark Tank, where these students actually study for a year about a product or a service that they think would solve a problem in West Virginia. So along with the Department of Education, he and some other officials took these students to Denver. Well, when I heard about it, I was thinking, "You know what? This needs to be expanded because the goal of any organization, I think, is to provide students with skills that are going to get them employment." And I just watched a video about Lincoln County's program, entrepreneurship program. I think that they're going to have like a debut of screening and invite the public about, it's phenomenal. So what we're going to do is I think we're going to support through a new grant, support that in six different counties. I think we're having Ningo County this time, Upsher County, Nickless County, I don't know, I can't think right now, but we're going to do that in the month of August and try to expand that program and to make it better. And then Dr. Dantoni and I have been talking about ways, you know, the only thing about, in my opinion, is about taking students to Denver, is why not have investors in West Virginia to support these students? I think that's the missing component and that's what we're going to be working on in the next year, you know, try to get more of those students who have an idea and teach them how to develop a business plan, teach them how to run a company. We have all these CTE students that are learning welding and auto body and whatever that could start their own business if they wanted to. There's grants and things out there to give them startup money, but sometimes they don't know where to look. So it's up to us to teach them those principles. So we're excited about that and I think that'll grow very fast. I think this is, we're partnering with a guy by the name of Murphy Poindexter and his, his partner went to Harvard and, you know, they, they worked on Wall Street and different places and they're going to be supporting our students within those six counties and encouraging them about how to become, you know, to support yourself economically, just right after high school, they can. So, and how to get patents if it's something that's going to have to be patented. So we are doing all kinds of work. The second folder is about AEPAs. This is a big part of Mountain State's business or cooperative. And, you know, we know that there is more potential than that AEPAs has in the state. One of our goals is to get up to more municipalities, to tell them about AEPAs, the products and services that we have that could save them money and also to nonprofit organizations. But I wanted to give you a new AEPAs folder and talk about the new products that we have. Tammy, I'm going to say Tammy and I, well, I'll just tell the truth. I'm sitting at an AEPAs business meeting and they needed someone to take the lead in the national bid for playgrounds. I've had several superintendents or facilities directors call me over the last three years, "We need playground equipment. Does AEPAs have playground equipment?" And everybody just sort of sat there. Well, Tammy and I, neither one have any kind of background in the procurement process. So there I was, raised my hand, "West Virginia will do it." Well, that was during our transition. It's probably a little of me for, you know, taking the initiative, but I want to say because of that transition, my role had to change and Tammy picked up a lot of that work and she did a phenomenal job. We now have nationally three huge playground bid groups. And it may not mean anything to you, but it was a lot of work for us and it means something to us. So on the back of like these pages, I think there's one for playgrounds that we had done. We have Playcraft, which is a national playground company. Compound is an international playground company. This ParTech, I'm going to tell you all something. If you have dirt surfaces, people laugh when I say this. This company, when they did their presentation to us, has the best dirt in the whole entire world. I didn't even know that there was a difference in dirt. I had no idea. But the lady brings us dirt and she said, "This is what's on the master's golf course." And it does feel different, you know, and this is what's on Yankee Field, you know, the Major League Baseball team. And there's different dirt for different portions of the field, like the pitching mound, home play. It's crazy. I mean, dirt is a whole, is a business all to itself, but this is the best dirt for like baseball fields, softball fields, playgrounds, whatever. If you need dirt, check out ParTech P. And then we have RomTech. Part of our playground bid was structures like benches, any kind of structures or signage that you need. So we're real proud of that. Also, on the back of each, each of these flyers gives like the bid numbers. Now, AEPAs, we have to meet not only West Virginia's procurement policies and procedures, but we have to meet 28 states' policies and procurement procedures as well. So it's a little bit more difficult and involved than even like the state contract. But we put the bid numbers out there. We have everything, teachers, school personnel, mostly all use like our Quill contracts for school supplies. We've been doing a lot of turf fields lately, trying to secure Marshall's baseball field, just picked up. We're going to, in the process of doing Huntington Highs, Marshall County, McDowell, two fields, I think, in McDowell County. So, you know, we're doing a lot of turf fields right now or in the process of securing those. But we have But we have furniture for cafeterias, for classrooms, you know, anytime that you build a new school, if you want to be environmental friendly, we have LED lights, things like that. We also added some custodial supply companies and custodial equipment and we're really proud of that. For the longest time, I've been trying to get Blick Art on there because when I was in accounting, all these art and science teachers at the end of school, you know, like typically in May or June, they had to turn in art and science supplies so we could order them during the summertime. So we have Blick Art, which is the biggest art company, and Frey Scientific. We also have companies that are doing more STEM. I have a lot of CTE centers that have contacted me about drones and robotic equipment. So we have three companies now doing that. Oh, and that's one thing that we're going to partner with the Mid-Ohio Workforce Development Board on too, is maybe doing a summer youth program in which kids can learn how to build drones and learn how to fly them. And that's a whole certification in itself. That really came out of a conference that I just attended in New York for virtual enterprise, the enterprise work that I was talking about. I was in a new burp or lift, can't remember which one, and I asked the driver, I said, hey, Amazon, have you ever thought about driving for Amazon? Amazon has a whole new business approach to who delivers packages now. And he said, no ma'am, I really haven't. To me, that doesn't sound lucrative, but I am interesting, interested in getting my certification, my drone certification, because I think that's a whole new market for companies to deliver goods and products all over the world. So, you know, that really got us thinking and how can we certify kids and drones? And I did some research, just, you know, not any scientific research, but they, you know, when we were having trouble many years ago in the Middle East, there was a group of people that were killing American soldiers and the first drone was able to capture who it was and for the United States to eliminate the problem. And that just fascinated me because I was thinking of drones as shipping, as a shipping provider and not so much for our, our intelligence purposes. So, you know, I mean, there's lots of opportunities out there everywhere. And then this was the flyer that most of the superintendents of the superintendent's conference was interested in. Because of the mandate, I think it's unfunded if I understand right, but putting cameras in special education classrooms, we have two companies that have every kind of camera possible that can, you know, enhance your current security systems or you can do, you know, a whole brand new system yourself. So, I wanted to run all of that by you and I will tell you that at our last AEP meeting, we were second behind Wisconsin for the growth of sales last year. And that's pretty big because West Virginia is a smaller state compared to some of our AEP states like California and Texas. And Tammy and I were sitting there and I said, how in the world did that happen? Because we were going through this transition and I just think that we were really blessed. But the, the items that are currently up for bid now, our fleet, and I've been working with some West Virginia car dealers in the state to get them to bid on our fleet bid. Wouldn't it be nice if somebody from West Virginia got a national bid? And then we're also bidding mowers and grounds equipment, like John Deere tractors and things like that, if you need those, and indoor flooring and carpeting as well. So those are going to be some nice items on our vendor list. And, and then lastly, I just want to thank all of you for allowing us to do what we like to do and, you know, really make a difference for the state of West Virginia. And like I said earlier, there's a lot of people out there that would be without a job if they didn't have a place to own it. So you've got teachers up in Weirton or Willing and you've got teachers over in Barber County that are certainly grateful that there are people like you in Lincoln County and West Virginia that's given them a chance to impact persons, people, students in our state. So thank you so much, certainly appreciate it. That's a lot of information, wasn't it?
I'm just sitting here going, wow.
Yeah.
Anybody have any particular questions or comments?
I don't like your awful business.
Absolutely. With Jan, Tammy, we can, as we can, our appreciation for what you do and all of our board, but we see a little bit of this when we come to our meetings, but typically I'm overwhelmed, I'm asking you questions and sometimes you know, you know more than I do, so, but then you'll say, I don't, we're going to talk to Jan. But then we go to things and then they, they bring up a topic that we've never even heard before and, you know, next thing we know, they've done things like you've heard here today. So, what I think of it is, you know, when we think of Rees, Rees's job, you know, its focus was pretty much in law, you know, here's what you're doing, dealing with educational things here. The entrepreneurial aspect of this, as you can see, this is a business. This is not, you know, tied just to certain counties and educational things. This is a business here. And Rees too, was probably, we're a little bit, correct, biased, but probably the best researcher was in West Virginia. But its focus was so much more narrow than what this, what we're seeing today is with Mountain State and educational services. And once again, there are three that have been established now that have taken place in Rees's. Not all counties are involved in any of it.
That's correct, yes.
Some counties aren't affiliated with either or any of the three. But, you know, which we feel that ours is the most successful and it continues to grow and I think both people would agree with that. You know, we attribute that to your all's work and the work that you all did. All of us here, you know, and I'll know all the board members, one thing they know about is legal.
Yes.
And they know legal. They know that's where, you know, Leslie Tyree does our legal, they know that. And that's something we've been in for several years now. But many of these other things are totally new to us all and you all continue to go out and seek and volunteer and get into new ventures that I feel a little bit wary of doing myself, but we just want to commend you all for what you do and, you know, our appreciation for everything.
I tell you, if it weren't for you, I, I don't know how I can stress this enough, if it weren't for you, the board, you know, allowing us to, to form the ESC and to continue our work, you know, we would all be back in accounting. And, you know, that's why I go to an adult ed conference where a lot of our employees are employed in the adult ed arena and, you know, they're just so appreciative. You know, when they came to us, year and a half ago, they had, they didn't know what it was going to look like, you know? And they're just so appreciative of everything. And I always tell them that we, down here in Southern West Virginia, we're sort of the forgotten people many times, but we have the best people who are intelligent, smart, bright and, you know, aren't, aren't afraid to take a risk, you know? As long as it's an educated risk. And for us to be, to do this work, I mean, it's crazy. We just celebrated our first anniversary and, you know, Tammy and I and Rachel, many of you know Rachel, my secretary, she's been, you know, with Rees since the inception. And we didn't have any background in business, you know, so, you know, it was a little bit risky and we didn't know if any of the ESCs could be viable. We didn't know what our work was going to look like and, but we knew that if we took care of our five counties, if we did work for our member counties, then perhaps that would be enough. But little did we know that, you know, we were growing so fast that it was just absolutely crazy and then still trying to get the foundation of everything in place. So, it's exciting. I think our most exciting time is probably ahead of us and, and like I said, we're all limited to what our imagination can be. It's just, you know, I attend the National Educational Service Agency meetings and, you know, each state looks differently and Tammy and I are leading a session at our national conference coming up in December. And we, it's in Phoenix is where the conference is. So we've titled it, A Phoenix Story, you know, telling the West Virginia story. And it's so, most states are going through something similar and there's like a hybrid out there of all different kinds of agencies. Some of them are supported by the states a little bit, some of them are totally entrepreneurial like us, but the good thing about this is we can learn off of those states and we can see what other states are doing and what kinds of services they're providing. And I just got back from a mini-conference and I had one of the service agency leading the discussion at the time say, and it sat with me, and that's going to be the majority of our coordinator's work this upcoming September, is, is how do we describe what we do to the average person? You have to know who you are to be able to tell them what you do. And this is just like a little bit of, about what we do, you know, I just hit on things and run, but actually it goes much deeper. So we need to learn to tell our story. If you know Hoppy Kertuel, that's one of the sessions that he does when he's a keynote speaker, is how to tell your story so that people understand what you do. So we're going to focus on that as well as the revenue side and make sure that we're, you know, financially sound and all that kind of stuff. But again, thank you so much. I'm sorry to take up so much of your time.
We appreciate you all coming out, you're welcome. Many times, we look forward to hearing you.
Do you have a question? Okay.
I really want to know more about dirt.
Dirt. Dirt, dirt's important.
You never knew you'd ask that question.
Matter of fact, I have salemos, I should have brought them in. You can feel this dirt, it's amazing.
I can see Mr. Wilkinson's eyes perked up over there when we start talking about dirt. Do we have dirt that can accommodate trees? That's what he means. Thank you very much. We appreciate you all coming out today. Okay, our next presenter for this afternoon is somebody that we know, he's in multiple places, Mr. Gosney, our maintenance director, going to give us an update. Greg?
I'm sorry. All right. We just got out of school and ready to start back.
Safe like that?
We, we, yeah. I'll go over some things that we've been doing and update you on some of the things we've had done and different things going on, we've done throughout the summer. Just go from school to school, kind of, kind of like some things, some things that's been done. At Hartz, we, we've got, we ordered our parking lot lights, all those lights, we have about six out and we replaced them with LED lights, same thing we've done at the high school, we continue to upgrade that. I hope those will be in, we've got nine in, we need eighteen, so if nine more come in and we'll make those changes and upgrade that system there to LED lighting. We already done all the sidewalk lighting out there for LED lighting, we'll just continue all of that. Ranger, near the end of the school year last year, Ranger, we had a hot water tank, 100 gallon hot water tank, that the whole bottom come out, I would rest it out. Damaged a lot of tile in the, in the multipurpose room. We had 2,500 square feet of tile that we had removed, it was damaged and we've since replaced that tile with new tile and then we put in a new hot water tank and repaired all of that. We're also addressing Ranger, we've completed all the fire marshal findings, we've already done all the repairs of Ranger's for that. At Gown Valley, Gown Valley, we've got a lot that's been going on at Gown Valley and also we took all the existing floor drains, we're replacing the gym floor, so we took all the existing floor drains and we routed them to the outside of the building to kind of go away with any issues, but the drain went back out and damaged the new floor. And then we put on the outside, on the side towards the river, we put a new drain in that goes into a drain there where the drains tie into that, but then old clay tile, if you know about old clay tile, it's about like that, it's kind of left in there, it was all shot and gone, replaced all that. Also on the backside, when they boxed the windows in, the backside windows, you still had the windows and a lot of those windows had been broken, glass was missing. So what was happening there, when we had a heavy rain, the rain would come in and hit those windows and it would run down inside and the water would run in the schools. What we done, we went inside and we framed all that up and replaced it with all metal, core deck metal, it's a lot like metal roofing, hanging collar, made it nice, boxed all those in. And we went all around, all the way around the gym and boxed all the rest of those in, windows in, they had old plywood on it, it's kind of, made it look a lot nicer with, that's what we done. So, we done that. We were ready to, we had our logo, had a Wildcat logo, it's already, they'd already made the template floor and is ready to go and Ms. Davis last week changed the logo. So we was hoping to have the floor completed and if they were wanting to paint it and get it sealed, so hopefully by the end of this weekend it will be done. They replaced the logo with the letters GB, is what they're doing now. The logo is on site now, so they're ready to start painting the letter GB in the center of the floor, so that'll take care of that. The bleachers are due to be installed on August the 19th. They'll be in and be installed, completed on that day, that's what they're, what they're being told right now, so. We did paint, course we now, we was hoping we get the school to finish painting it down from the mats on down, we painted all the upper area, all the way around the basins and all that down. We are going to have to do, after we go in there, after the floor is done, and we'll have to go in and raise all the backboards, the 10 foot. The floor is a raised floor, you're going to see it, it's kind of raised up, then we'll have an offset going in the door entryway, so you've got about an inch and a half, but we'll have to raise all the basins up to meet, I think that's a 10 foot basket there. That project's really come along. That floor looks beautiful, I think that's going to be a beautiful floor when we get done with it. Duval, Duval, we're finishing up replacing three additional roof sections that we have the SBA money to complete that project at Duval. We had a little bit of rain, but he's telling me by the end of this month, which is this week, hopefully they'll be done at Duval with the roof sections. We have started the sewer plant upgrade, we did run into a couple of issues here, I was meeting with them a couple of times last week and the week before that, had meeting the same with them. What we found is in the, on the side closest to the sewer plant, there was an additional septic tank we didn't know about. So the septic tank had to be scraped and, rather than take the septic tank out, what we're doing is we're scraping it and we're going to use it as a holding, a catch basin if you will, it'd be a catch basin and then drain on out to the, to the new sewer plant. Rather than trying to take it out and tearing everything up, it made more sense, we'll fill it in halfway with concrete and then use it as a catch basin, manhole, whatever you want to call it, something like that. So that's, we're trying to, I talked last week with Mid-Atlantic and they were on site, they're wanting to move the project, I'm wanting to move the project on and get that completed. The actual new sewer plant is there, they filled in around it, the old sewer plant is still functioning. We're going to be, express the concern about having the dirt removed off of the front lawn and moving it around the areas that we need it, the fence back up and open that area up, because that's the main transport for our buses to go through there. We're hoping by, maybe a little week or two after school starts and then it'll be completed. We can kind of run into that with the additional septic tank. Now, we did replace, they replaced a soccer building that's by the ball field at Duval. We replaced the new metal roof, the new metal roof on that building also. Midway Sewer Plant, the sewer plant is done. The old sewer plant they removed, the yard has been restored back, the concrete, they poured concrete, walls and things back last week. Couple of issues with the lawn getting the grass to go, we're working on that. And then a couple, some timbers that they used down there was on the Then in a couple, uh, some timbers that they used down there was on the, uh, basketball court. They want, they're in process of removing that and putting that fence back up. So it's really, it really looks good and, uh, come along with that. Also midway we removed, uh, we had some asbestos floor tile that we had some issues with. We kind of baited it throughout last year and we had it removed at the end of the school year. Another fourteen hundred square feet of asbestos floor tile was removed. And then we had to go back in and install new floor tiles. It was about fourteen hundred square feet while we ended up putting back in there. So that leaves us with about, uh, three hundred square feet of asbestos file tile left in that building. And we installed a new sign, a new sign on, there was a, one side had a sign, the other side didn't. So we went back and we put a, we installed last week a new sign to both sides of the public and see what's going on at your school. Uh, here at the board office, we removed, the board office now is asbestos free. We removed, uh, asbestos floor tile in three different locations, actually four, count the two bathrooms. And then, uh, we had some, uh, pipe insulation removed. So it's now asbestos free. Still working on replacing the tile and some of that. West Hamlin, uh, we're in the process of building the inside wall to alleviate, uh, some, some of the usage happen, use of portable buildings out there. In the process of replacing all the, the lights, all the ball fields lights, both the baseball field and the softball field. We're replacing all those lights, doing them all together and having that done. We have an extra boiler at the school. We've delivered it and we're starting to look at how best to set this up and have a backup hot water boiler system at the school. Last year we had an older boiler, was having a lot of issues. So we put us, we're putting in another one to, to try and avoid any issues with the hot water at the school. Uh, fence area by the playground, we've added a fence from the playground down to, and we're repairing the gate. The gate, somebody backed in the gate, damaged the gate. So we're going to tie it into the gate. When we make the playground, we have issues with several of the kids running out from cars as cars would run around there. So we're putting another, uh, fence there on the playground, another gate and then access gate for us to, to get in and out of it. I would like to, if, once we get this done, we have to have the fire marshal come back in and, uh, on our, the additional classroom that we'll build in the, uh, library. They do have to inspect that and, uh, give us a certificate of occupancy for, for that area. Once that's done, I would like to, uh, go on and be able to demolish some of those models and get the models out there if at all possible. A lot of the floors and those are brought it out. I think one of them came from, I think one of them came from Al County, maybe, and, uh, the other one came from eight milli. So there were old buildings when we got them and, uh, just the bathrooms, I know we've had issues with those floors. Yeah, the portables, so. That's the thing. At Lincoln County High School, we replaced all the parking lots. So all the parking lots, uh, finally got the last thirteen. We have thirteen left to do. Those were done. We replaced all those, everything there is all LED now. Uh, we done some, I provided some training and we upgraded some of our lighting system at that school. I know sometimes you may see the outside lights on, they shouldn't be on. Sometimes you get relays and things like that that stick. The newer relays, these relays that were in these relay boards, they were like a one amp relay and these little thing, the contacts are welded together and that light would stick on. So we replaced the whole board. What we done is we upgraded them and the new relay boards are three amps, so they're, they're a little bit higher. They'll, they'll handle more. And the relay itself, we can just unplug that relay and plug a new one in, plug a ribbon cable in and done. Before you had to replace the whole board. Some newer things we're doing there. We went through the system and, and simplified, took some things out and to make the lighting work a lot better there. And provided training to Mr. Spence and the maintenance personnel to train also on this system, how to access the system, what to look for when you're working on the system. Soccer field, we put, we, we connected up to the scoreboard for the soccer field, electric and, uh, got all that connected up. Let's see, Hamlin, Hamlin, right at the, uh, start of our season, we replaced the chiller. And this replacement on that chiller, we, they wanted twenty-five thousand dollars to install it, turn it off. So we decided we would do it, we would get Mason Berry to assist us and then we provide our personnel to help do that. So the twenty-five thousand dollars, we spent roughly about sixty-eight hundred dollars for their guy to be there to help us and then for the crane to take all that out. So we had a savings there, about eighteen thousand dollars. Pretty good savings for our guys to actually do that. Uh, front entrance of these middle schools, along with these middle schools, we've done away with it at Duval, different thing. Years ago, we put this tile, we thought that was a great thing, put the tile at the front entrance. Um, what happens with tile, it's a ceramic tile. You get water under ceramic tile, you walk on it, cracks, it pops up and then you've got a trip hazard, a thing like that. We're, we've taken all that off of the front entrance at, at Hamlin and, uh, I've got some alternative. It's a difference of plastic type tile that, uh, we want to try that and see how that does there and then start implementing that in some of the others to make the entrance way look a little nicer when we come in. Rather than just taking concrete and painting that, uh, something a little bit nicer to do that. One of the things that just wasn't so much managed by myself, Jerry Kmean's and Larry Harshberger, we upgraded the fiber. We done the fiber between the building and the Hamlin Middle School and the elementary. Put a fifty micron fiber in there, the newest grade fiber. It had a sixty-two point five micron, which is, uh, when you do a multi-mode type transmission with, uh, with data, that slows you down quite a bit. So we've upgraded that and along with that, we've also upgraded, uh, a lot of the data wire that was bad, uh, in that, in the elementary side. We replaced a lot of Cat Five and some older Cat Three with the newer Cat Six wiring. So Jerry, Jerry and I are in the process of, you know, I know we should finish that up. I'm hoping Wednesday we got a little bit and, uh, completely kind of that up with there, so. Not as much as I wanted to complete this summer. I mean, I've been, some days I've been one man and, uh, most of the time I have three, so, you know, we do. We try to prioritize and give everybody a little something, so.
Another wow for me. Some days with one man, I agree.
Yeah, some days, sometimes, uh, I've heard finger job, uh, once you're going to sign that date.
Greg, I know you've been really busy, but have anything ever been done about the speakers at the baseball field at Harts?
I have not. I know we discussed that. I, I have, when we were getting rid of all, all the surplus, uh, there's a PA system type system there. Uh, we have not. That's something we need to look at. I don't know without going up there, uh, what, what's what. I know that they had something before. I know that the high school had a portable system, but, uh, I don't know if they're using it now or not, but that may be something that we could look at. That's something I need to do.
Yeah, if you get a chance, just check on it. They're wanting a scoreboard and Brian, I know you worked with Brian for a long time, Fred, about trying to get a scoreboard there and he has promised, but then he said, oh, yeah, yeah, I can do that. And then I can't get back in touch with him. Fred had trouble getting back in touch with him.
I know we talked about that scoreboard in the, it was built, I think it was seventy-four, seventy-five or something. It was old. And the person who told me that actually handled it, I called her and it's her husband and he passed away. I'm like, she didn't have anyone else that worked on that old school.
Well, Brian's from our strong. He says, oh, yeah, we can do that. We're glad to do that. Can't get him to move.
We'll, I'll put that on there to look at that. We talked about that.
Okay. Do you have any, any other particular, Mr. Gosney? Greg, appreciate all you do. Couple of weeks to go. It all starts again.
It all starts again.
And all, some new things will emerge, but we appreciate all you do. Thank you.
Buildings look good. You know, I've been out.
Yeah.
I was doing walkthroughs of the grand house last week. We went around all the, all the, this whole building. Looking good. What do we have? Cold air? Come back all the way. It never, when you, it's a plumb thing once you get in the week. I know that Jerry and Kevin's going to do some walkthroughs, uh, Thursday, Friday. And look at, make sure everything's, it's good and all those units are, they're going to start bringing units back down, back online and, uh, get, to give it back in. Uh, we've got, we're doing a second part of our, uh, chiller maintenance. I've got NISO there at the high school today cleaning the coals on the chiller right now. We do have to re, have a repair on the new chiller there this summer. Uh, two solder joints that were leaking free on, we fixed that. They're cleaning the coals. He's, uh, he's going to go from here to, I think he'll go to West Hamlin and then go to Harts and track this side next week. The lawn cleaned up and it, yeah. It's good.
Have you seen the floor at that now?
I have. Have you seen it?
I saw a picture of it. Ms. Davis sent Sean a picture and, oh my gosh.
That's good.
Very cute.
That floor's going to be, it's going to be something. Thing about that floor too, I was really pleased this company, we actually, the demolition, they actually hired local kids that just, you know, out of high school. There was about four boys that come there and they'd stay on fifteen months, hire, you know, to work and they loved that. And so it worked out good for them. It, it was nasty with the, I didn't have, I said, take a water hose, hose that down. It was really dusty, but, uh, we tried to save, we thought about trying to save some of that. The way those clips went in there and, uh, it would splinter when it come up, so we, but I think some people were able to get some pieces of it. I know the contractors that take whatever you want, but, uh, some people they go get a piece of it for, uh, their own use. But, uh, I think, I think it's going to be, when we get down with it, it's going to be a beautiful floor, so.
It's really nice.
Right.
Yeah. Did you get a piece of that? I did and I went over the floor. I think I chaired it through all that splinter from Greg just saying when it come up, it was just soaked in it. I just wasn't, anybody there to sound.
Thanks. Okay. Uh, okay, that concludes our presentations for today. Let's go to the administrative section. Is there a motion please?
I'll move.
Karen? Fred, exactly that.
Item A is the adoption of policy fifty-five eleven, which is our student progress and grooming policy. Surprisingly, in the last thirty days, I have not received one comment after all the attention that we had initially. So I'm not sure what to make of the fact that I didn't hear anything. So anyway, just want to be aware of, then see any feedback. Item D is an out-of-county student transfer, or out-of-county student transfers for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Item C is approval of our staff development plan for service personnel for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year. Item D is a contract with Ann Gandy to provide training and assistance to treasurer Ellis over twenty days from August first, two thousand nineteen, June thirtieth, two thousand twenty, according to the terms of the contract. Item E is renew our agreement with the town of Hamlin to buy a certified pension resource officer at Lee County High School for the two thousand nineteen, two thousand twenty school year, according to the terms of the agreement.
If I have any questions, comments, any, uh, just, uh, just point of interest. Chip on the, uh, the resource officer is an increase there, but is that due to the officers paying for their rank or something?
Yes, uh, it is, there's a fifty-four hundred dollar increase in what we've been paid this past year. You can get an increase in pay because of the employment rank as well as, I guess, I think got an additional pay raise and benefits that I have also now as well, uh, for a resource officer.
As far as all the duties that either the former or real, uh, remain the same?
Right, those duties remain same. I've been communicating with Rhonda Kersey. She's been talking to Christie. And, uh, we're, we're working on the grant proposal. I think it was eighteen thousand dollar grant last year. Something like that was the number. So that, that grant's going to be resubmitted. It'll be good for three years if we're successful and, and it's retroactive. It would back up and pay for this past year as well. So, uh, we're optimistic, just go around and get that funding. And then there's a larger grant, uh, that, that we're going to make application for as well, uh, that we include enough funding in there to possibly hire, uh, two resource officers. Not sure what that will look like, but, uh, we're, we're just kind of in initial phases of the application process. As I, I learn more, know more, I'll share with you. Second officer, possibly the middle school.
Middle school.
I'm all about the grants, so we have this option of the right purpose.
This would all be, uh, connected to, to the town of Hamlin.
Yes.
I'm just trying to think about maybe what they're saying here. That would maybe limit it to, to middle school. Maybe at some point there'll be some grants available, money that we could, uh, spread out and serve the rest of the county. I mean, the, the outside, maybe the county. Okay. Uh, no questions on the administrative section? Down in all the yes votes on these items?
Yes.
All right. In the finance section, is there a motion please? President of motion, Larry seconded that one. Ray?
Um, A, a schedule of invoices totaling two hundred ninety-four thousand, five hundred eighty-one dollars and thirty-seven cents. That listing is attached. B, a county pension for the following retired employees. And that is it. Paid for from the Texas living fund.
Once again, they chose the dental option.
Yep. On a note, last year, uh, well, I'm supposed to get the valuation for the Gatsby seventy-five for the financial statement. Last year the company wanted, I think it was around twenty-two to twenty-six thousand dollars. I think I found somebody that, that is extremely cheaper, who does the same thing. I talked to the Putnam County Treasurer and he gave me a name and a number for somebody out west, somewhere around Idaho. And, uh, that's going to be cut down about, I don't know, six hundred percent, something like that. Between twenty-five hundred to four thousand dollars instead of the twenty-two thousand dollars. So I've, I've tried to make sure that they're going to give me the same numbers that I need, that I'm not going to have to interpret this and have the auditor work on this. And they said, no, you'll get the number. So I'm probably going to issue them a P O in very near future. They'll look at two thousand nineteen number, school board to two thousand and twenty. And again, that's better than twenty-something thousand dollars.
Would it, uh, decision, what we've been getting, they were big? Would I hear that?
Yeah, it's, uh, you know, not an expense we, none of us wanted to have anyway, so, uh, to get it a little bit cheaper. It works for Putnam County and I tried to make sure that they've got the same kind of, uh, pension or dental vision, you know, for retirees that we didn't. And, uh, it may not be exactly the same, similar, so.
Great to feel the savings there, so I'd like to look at.
Yeah, it made me happy.
Yeah. Me too. Okay. Uh, no questions on finance or banking? No, is that in all your vote on this?
Yes.
Yeah. Excuse the personnel section. Is there a motion please? The same motion section by Larry.
Make sure you have a revise.
Five, seven, five.
Seven, five, fifty-five. Item A, appointment of short-term substitute professional personnel. Item B, appointment of professional personnel. Item C, transfer of professional personnel. That's a real line within the school. D, transfer of professional personnel. E, appointment of substitute service personnel. F, transfer of service personnel. G, leave of absence. H, retirements and resignations. And also abolish, uh, the posting for a title one. We had posted at, uh, Harts and that was a move within the school. Also P E and health, uh, we hired grant rates on a T I, our teacher residence, uh, very good. And also we've been wrestling with this and what, what Mr. Athas got over there, decided to abolish a sewer.
a social studies position, least correct position, should be another I P O S, I T I O, we didn't get you, we look at these, just call it. But, uh, that's where we are. Some of our real concerns, you can, you can see, I gave you this sheet, uh, some of our real concerns is, is, once again, math, social studies and, uh, we're going down and we, we do have some pretty quality subs to put in these positions to start out, but what happens is, then we, people miss, we don't have a quality sub to put in because all of our quality subs are in these positions. And one thing, uh, to bring out two bus drivers, right now we have two bus drivers that are working other jobs, uh, we don't know if they're going to come back or they're going to stay in those jobs. And if that happens, we'll start the school short, one bus driver. Now we have two that's about to finish training, but that's a real, real concern is, is the bus driver.
We have no substitute driver?
We have some substitute drivers, but.
Do we have seven in that, or seven in that class? Two are almost ready.
Two are almost ready.
Helps on.
The drive the bus day at the high school actually recruited some people. Took buses over to high school, you could drive that day and, so, but, but that, that is a concern and then also the concern of, uh, of filling these positions, getting our good subs for these positions and then.
Well, it's not a problem that you need to our county.
No, no, sir. No, sir. I looked this morning, I don't remember how many yet. I think it's fifty-something special ed, so many math and, yeah, it's, it's, it's across the state. We'll keep pulling it away and, and, uh, I want to thank the board once again for letting us break the divides in Indiana. I think if we do add August the sixth, uh, I think that'd be it for revise. Unless I come begging for next week or something happens.
August sixth is pretty much, uh.
Yeah, yeah, it, it, it is.
We're going to have to get her down.
But I'll tell you, that makes a world difference because, you know, give me four or five more days, get someone in to do, get one agenda, really helps.
I know, yes.
We appreciate that.
Appreciate that. That's why we're, we let you do it this time.
It's all right.
Okay. If I have any comments or concerns about any, uh, personnel items? Uh, if not, is that an all yes vote on personnel items?
Yes.
Yes. That's all yes on personnel. Okay. Well, I'm going to do now since we completed most of the agenda, Mr. King?
Sir?
Do you come up please? We've just, uh, hired Mr. King as our new assistant superintendent. I'd just like to, uh, publicly, uh, thank him for applying for this position, accepting it.
Thank you, sir.
It's been, uh, he's shown, uh, his, uh, knowledge and expertise in many areas, uh, since he's been there in Lincoln County and I'm sure he'll, uh, take another step and do a good job for us there. Any comments?
I just want to thank the board, thank Mr. Biggiv, thank Mr. Limble. I'd like to thank my wife for being here today. I know it's going to be, uh, the learning curve is going to be sharp, the hill will be steep, but I know I have a good coach. Uh, we've, we've had some discussion and, uh, I will do my very best to make sure that Lincoln County Schools continues to move forward, progressive, and our students receive the best education possible. Thank you.
Right, and you're right here. Best of luck. Uh, now, Mr. Limble's taken a few, some liberties here on occasion, you know, to say, I'm sure he'll fill you in on where he feels that it may be appropriate.
We've had some discussion and we'll continue.
Now.
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
Can you make pancakes?
Uh, that's going to be one of the first things that we talk about. I, I, I need to ask if I can borrow his hot curry. Just check. It's on the list tomorrow. That's that curry.
There was a damn size. We're hoping to contract with Mr. Limble for breakfast on those days.
Will you take your candy bowl from that?
Oh, yeah, that'll move, that, that part of it moves with us.
Yeah, we did wish you well, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. King, we're glad to have you with us today.
Go ahead.
What's the contract situation? Does Bill's contract continue for Kirk or, does he get a new contract or?
That would be a weird question.
Oh, okay.
Are you talking as far as his, uh, salary?
No, I'm just talking about the con, the length of the contract.
Goes a long way with beer, mine.
Well, typically, I'm assuming we will follow the same standard if, uh, if necessary for us to put that in, in, uh, grand show, but typically the assistant's contract would coincide with that of the superintendent.
Okay.
It, it may not exceed it.
Okay.
Uh, but it can be consistent with it, so my anticipation is that Mr. King's contract will be the same as Mr. Biggiv's, but it, it may not by law exceed it.
Okay, thank you.
Anything, is that all you have, John?
Yeah.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's go on now, the comments, concerns, uh, first of all, uh, we had a possible legal update this evening, this afternoon, and my understanding due to an almost sexual post box, particularly when I was in here, so we will not have that today. Okay. Board members, anything, uh, might want to say? I'll, I'll, yeah, just, let's see, a couple, just a reminder of tomorrow, uh, at eleven A M, the, uh, L C H S Cheerleage will have a hot dog sale, uh, that'll be out here at the ball field. Wednesday, eleven o'clock, so if you have a need for some hot dogs, uh, you may go there or you may contact them and then they'll even deliver them to you. We'll do it that way. But they, uh, do have their annual fundraiser, Mark Levin. And other than that, that's all I have for, Mr. Biggiv, what do you have?
I just want to, item, the Teacher of the Year, Service Officer of the Year ceremony, just want to check with the board, I asked you your availability on Tuesday, September third.
Service?
Service and teacher. I want to recognize those individuals at five P M.
What'd you say?
Uh, Tuesday, September third, five P M. An hour before our regular scheduled meeting.
Done that. Good, good. More than I know yet. Works. It's going to be good. Okay. Anything else? Yeah, that's all. Okay. Well, nothing further than we'll adjourn for, uh, Tuesday, August the sixth, two thousand nineteen, six P M. Here at the county office, have a motion please.
One, please.
Karen made the motion, Larry seconded that. All yes votes?
Yes.
Okay, so we will, uh, adjourn this meeting.